All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the August 2025 Oldham County Planning and Zoning Hearing. I'm Greg King. If everyone would please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And also at this time, please join me. Get those electronics out. Put them to mute. Turn them off. Make certain that they don't go off during the hearing. Thank you very much. First order of business will be approval of minutes. Can I go ahead and get a motion on the floor?
No move.
Thank you, sir. And do I have a second? Okay, so any edits, updates, corrections?
Not for me.
Ms. Jones.
Wow, what?
I have just one.
Okay.
Okay, so on page four, the second paragraph, next to the last line in that paragraph, it said, "And this would not have been a issue." That should be "an."
Thank you. All right, anyone else? We'll go with a voice vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please signify by saying aye. And opposed like sign. Was that you? Okay. All right, so minutes are approved. Can we go ahead and get staff sworn, please?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right. And Ms. Edgar, first docket item for today? Oh, excuse me. Okay, so a couple of things, right? So, yes, we do. And sorry, hold on to the docket. First of all, some housekeeping. For those of you who don't know yet today is the last meeting that Sam Finney will be joining us for the commission. So we'd like to thank him for all of his years of service and extend our appreciation to him for everything he's done for us. Thank you, Mr. Finney. Also, lots of new faces on the commission today, so please join me in welcoming three new commissioners. We have Skip Miller. We have Wayne Allen, and we have Jim Allison. Thank you. Thank you, all gentlemen. We appreciate you being here. Your service to the community. Thank you very much. Okay? Finally, several of you have expressed to me some interest in getting to other places early this afternoon. I was going to say, hey, we've got a lengthy docket. Let's try to find lunch, but we're going to keep our foot on the gas instead and try to push through, get you guys where you need to go. If that's all right with everyone. If you need a break, let me know. Finally, Mr. Fisher, time to move into executive session. So, PZ dash two five dash zero one six has been removed from the docket. That is, the application from Bowman Consulting. At the address of nineteen thirteen South Highway fifty-three has been removed from the docket for today. Ryan, do you have status on that? Is it coming back or?
It should be coming back. They needed a traffic study and it had not been produced yet to the engineer for their review.
So those of you wishing to speak or to hear about that, we're not going to be doing that one today. So now, executive session. All right, so we need to move into executive session. Commission will be moving across the hall. I need to get a motion to move into executive session, please. Do I need a second on that, counsel? Okay, let's get a second. Thank you. Motion and second. We'll go with voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed like sign. All right? We'll move across the hall. Executive session. That was Mr. Douglas. Okay, all right. Do I need to pull them back or? Hang on, guys. Hang on, guys. Hang on, guys. I put it back. Got to get a reason. Got to get a reason. We're going to vote again. Sorry, guys. Protocol. We need to get a reason for the motion on record. Mr. Marsh?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that we go to executive session pursuant to discuss KRS six one dash eight one zero related to pending litigation involving a public agency.
Very well. Thank you. And is that okay with the second? All right. Once again, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed like sign. Thank you. Thank you.
I don't want to go in there. It's less minute taking for me.
This is Gary Stark, passing the signs out. So do you want to tell Adam that? Here's his business card that has his email address that he would like to have that emailed to. It's probably just easier to email it to him. Thank you, though. If you want, I was going to write on the back of it, wanting sign ordinance.
I remember.
Okay.
Somebody else asked him the same question yesterday.
Sit tight, guys. We've got a couple more members coming to join just before we get back to open session. All right, everybody back in place. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor to return to open session. Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Do I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Jones, thank you. We'll go with voice photo. All in favor of returning to open session, please signify by saying aye. Pose like sun, and we're back in the saddle. All right, first docket item, Ms. Edgar.
Docket PZ-25-019, an application has been filed by Pillar for a development plan on property located at 7519 Apple Patch Court, Crestwood. The property is 4.5 acres in zone R4 residential district.
Good morning, Planning Commission members. Anna Barge, senior planner, and I'll be giving the presentation. So this is the docket item that Ms. Edgar just read. For the site information, it's zoned R4 residential. The existing land use is residential. There is one house in the property, and the total acreage is 4.5 acres, and that is the tax parcel seen there. For the site history, starts in 1988 where the site was rezoned from R2 to I2, and then in 1999, the site was rezoned from I2 to R4. And then in 2005, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved a zoning map amendment on 20 acres from that I2 to R4 and a preliminary plan for the park at Apple Patch. This development involved the creation of two residential developments, Celebration Park and Independence Park. And then in 2006, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved a revised development plan for the park at Apple Patch. And then in 2007, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved a revised development plan for the Independence Park portion of the development. And then in 2009, they approved another revised development, and then a couple waivers and variances. And then in 2012, there is another approval of a revised preliminary subdivision development plan for 44 apartments and 22 garden homes, and then a waiver and a couple variances. Then in 2021, Planning Commission reviewed and approved a preliminary subdivision plan development plan for Brownsboro Woods Phase 2. Additionally, the Planning Commission approved a parking waiver. So for this case specifically, the pre-op meeting happened in May with TRC in July. The agenda was posted to the website on July 25, and adjoining property owner notices were mailed on August 5 with the notice in the Oldham era on August 7. So this is the property in question, with additionally this portion up here, but that is going to be, there's no physical building being built. This is going to be for retention up here. So as you can see, this whole area is R4. So the comprehensive plans future land use map predicts the use of this tract will be attached multifamily, and the rest of this plan meets all standards in the Oldham County zoning ordinance. I've included the TRC comments in your packet. So the applicant has submitted an amended plan for 72 one-bedroom apartments. The purpose of the site will be for individuals with intellectual disabilities to live independently while having support services available. There will be one building with three floors and a walkout basement. The total building area is 84,333 square feet. And then according to zoning ordinance section 090-020, the maximum density is 16 units per acre when sewers are present. The dwelling units per acre is 15.8 for this plan. So this is the plan. I provided a newer plan because they decided to change this entrance. So you all have that updated plan. So originally, they're going to have two entrances, one on the Celebration Way and one on Apple Patch Court, but because of topography and other issues that they can speak to, this will only be to access maintenance equipment, I believe, and the trash area, so there will not be, you know, traffic from actual parking lot coming through here. And they can speak more to that as the applicant. So the parking will come out on Apple Patch Way. And here's a little bit more zoomed in for the Celebration Court. There's residences on this side, and then Apple Patch Way. This will be where they'll be going out. So this is the entrance of the subdivision. It's off of 329 here. The interstate is to the south of this, so it's at that Celebration Way, and there's the Celebration Park sign. And then there's not a lot to see, like even if you're physically there right now, but I tried to provide pictures to show the best, but this is a view from the Apple Patch Court. These are additional photos. And then this is up right before you get to the house where the Coliseum kind of area is, and there's that existing house that's going to remain into the side of the existing house. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval of the development plan for Choice Landing Apartments on 4.5 acres. So the proposed binding elements, the approval only applies to the plan presented at the August 26, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. There shall be no changes to the plan without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission and Engineers Office, and the plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements, and comply with all necessary easement restrictions at time of construction plan approval.
Thank you, Ms. Barge. Anyone else from staff? Mr. Silliman? Did we get you sworn earlier?
You did not.
Oh, let's do that, please.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning. So this project will disturb greater than an acre of land disturbance, so as is typical, the So as is typical, the applicant would be required to submit their construction plans to my office for review for a stormwater quality management and erosion control permit. They will also be required to obtain a KYR-10 permit from the Kentucky Division of Water for the same reason, greater than one acre land disturbance. Part of that review will include, and I'm going to scroll to one of Anna's pictures because it showed it. Part of that review will include analysis of the existing detention basin here to ensure that the way it was designed with previous phases of this development meet our current standards and both volume for stormwater detention and water quality. And Anna mentioned the previous Brownsboro Woods Phase 2, which we got through a portion of construction plan review, but then the project didn't proceed. So we've coordinated some already with the designers on this, and we'll just continue that coordination for plan review. I think one of the other, at least in my mind, is one of the points of concern in this area is traffic. 329 is a busy area right now. We are, the county is working with Kentucky Transportation Cabinet on a study of 329B, the bypass. And that study, the limits of that are from 71 to 22, so it doesn't really go quite this far. There's also the chlor station development, which they've provided a traffic impact study, which is also being reviewed by the Transportation Cabinet, and it's being worked into that 329B study also. That one actually stops a little bit short of this development. And then the other portion, the other thing we're looking at is the improvements to Exit 14 and I-71. Of course, those are all a little bit south of this. What we do have is in 20, oh, sorry, 2005, when the Apple Patch development first came through, there was a traffic impact study produced by Kiesel Myers Engineers. And at that time, the speed limit on 329 here was 55 miles an hour. And that traffic study indicated that upon full development, there would likely be a left turn lane at the entrance. When the Brownsboro Woods project came to you for review in 2021, we had them update that study, even though this particular parcel may not have generated significant amount of traffic. It was part of this greater plan. And there was the original study done, so we had the applicant update that study. And it basically found that because the speed limit has been reduced to 35 miles per hour in that area, that that left turn lane would not be required. Now, as we're looking at this now, the assisted living type scenario they're proposing generates about the same amount of traffic as was looked at for the 2021 study, so we didn't have them update that. It seems still valid. So I think the 2021 study that showed that because the speed limit's 35 miles an hour now, that a left turn lane is not required still holds true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silliman. All right, Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we'll move into presentation from applicant.
Good morning. I'm Andrew Hawes. I'm president and CEO of the Housing Partnership. We're partnering with Pillar and helping them with this development. I am an attorney representing this project today. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mike Hill for the presentation.
If you give us just a second, would you like to go ahead and get your team, whoever's going to provide testimony sworn in?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hill?
Thank you. Good morning. Mike Hill, Land Design and Development, 503 Washburn Avenue, Louisville, 40222. I'll open up my slides here. Close that. Okay, so, good morning. We're here to present a development plan for Pillar, which is formerly known as Apple Patch, to you all. Many of you have been around Oldham County for a long time, are likely familiar with Apple Patch and their mission. They basically serve or provide housing for individuals with intellectual disabilities. So what we're here today for is a revised development plan that shows a single proposed building. It's three stories with a walkout basement on a portion of it. It will include 72 one-bedroom apartment units for these individuals. There also will be a portion of the building that will be designed for the office space for Pillar staff. So they have a nearby building and office that they will relocate staff to this new building if approved. There also will be, within the structure, some common areas for residents and for, you know, services that are provided to the residents that live there. So this is the zoning map with our site highlighted. It's, the site highlighted there is three acres. Just to the north of it is another acre and a half area that's basically used for detention, as Mr. Silliman mentioned. So we're zoned R4. Surrounding properties, as you can see, are also zoned R4. There is some industrial and commercial in the area as well. And then here's our existing conditions aerial map. There is one structure on that, on the property already. It's this 7519 house. Pillar already uses it for some residents of their program, and that will remain after construction of the new building on the lot. So you can kind of see how it fits in with the surrounding developed properties, several of which are also owned by Pillar. Couple of these homes in this area are Pillar homes, as well as several other scattered properties throughout the adjacent neighborhood. This is our proposed development plan on an existing aerial. So you can see our development. It's kind of a L-shaped building here, which I'll show you more about what it'll look like on another slide. Parking lot. Be one access point here into the main parking lot off of Apple Patch Way. There'll be another secondary access off of the street here. They will not connect, however. There's topography issues that were too challenging to connect the two entrances. This is a more detailed look at our development plan. So again, our building is the brown structure here. The entrance to it will be, there's a kind of a canopy drop-off area here. That will be the main entrance into the building from the parking lot, where the residents and the staff, you know, will park and enter the building. The users, the future residents, and they've done analysis based on their existing population that they serve, very few of them drive, very few are drivers. It's a really low percentage, like less than 10% of their population actually drives, on average, based on their experience. But we have designed a parking lot that serves the number of units that we're providing and a number of staff as well. So that's the main parking lot here. Again, you'll be able to, kind of the staff, maintenance staff, will be able to utilize this lower-level parking lot. There's a dumpster here. There's a door on the end, kind of in the lower-level walkout area that will be able to be utilized for various reasons, but certainly will not be a primary entrance. And again, there's a gap. You can see green space between the two parking lot areas. The grade change is just too significant there to make a safe, accessible parking lot that connects all the way through. The plantings that you see are conceptual in nature. Of course, once, if approved, we'll have to provide detailed site construction plans to the county for review, which will include a landscape plan that will dictate, you know, the type and location of plants that are required for installation on the site. There is existing landscape buffer or proposed landscape buffer along this property line here, as was shown on the previous development plan four years ago, that is proposed to remain as was proposed at that time. All of our utilities are readily available to the site. There will be some utility relocations required because there are some existing sewer lines and drainage lines that run right through the middle of this lot. So we'll be working with different utility agencies, as well as county engineer at construction plan phase, to make sure we relocate those appropriately. So all of our stormwater will be captured within a parking lot and a series of catch basins and pipes, and directed out toward the existing drainage system out in the street, and eventually over to the detention basin on the other side of the street, which is also part of our development site. As mentioned by the county engineer, we'll have to prove that that is adequately sized and designed to handle our additional runoff. So we've preliminarily have done that analysis, but we'll have to take a deeper dive in the engineering phase to determine that that is actually possible and ready for additional flows. This is kind of the architect's rendering of what the building would look like. So you can see the three stories, the canopy, the drop-off canopy, and the center. So that would be the main entrance. The parking lot on the interior would be in this location here. And then it kind of falls off, so you can sort of start to see that. And this, down on this end is where the building, the lower-level building entrance would be. And I see his rendering does not include that. That was kind of a last-minute adjustment based on our topography. But the, this kind of gives you a look or feel for the look. It's brick, it's board and batten, fiber cement siding. As far as what the apartments look like on the interior, they're one-bedroom, one-bath apartments, approximately 720 square feet. This is two options that the architect so far has come up with that show living space. One bedroom, there's a living space. There's a kitchen area, there's bathroom, there's washer and dryer hookups. So within each of the three floors, there will be a main central corridor or hallway, and off the corridor on each direction will be a series of these designed apartment units. And then back to the development plan. That's the basic summary. We have representatives from Pillar here to help answer questions as we proceed. Happy to take questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Anything else from applicant? Is there anyone else here willing or wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone else present wishing to speak in support of this application? Seeing none, are there any, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition or with questions about this application? Please. We'll get your name and address for the record, and then we'll get you sworn in.
I'm Judy Crask. I live at 7415 Highway 329, directly across from the Apple Patch development or project, whatever. And I'd like to...
One second.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. My concern, and I'm sure it's a concern with Pillar, Apple Patch, in the area on 329 there, the speed limit is 35. But hardly anybody does 35 in Brownsboro, and I've been there 45 years. And it's detrimental to my health to be able to mow my grass once a week with the rock trucks and the commuters from Prospect to Crestwood, Crestwood to Prospect. It's every day. It's dump trucks. And in that area, if I can employ the help of Apple Patch, I'm not against the development. I'm just concerned about the traffic and the entrance and exit of...
Come a little closer to that mic, please. I don't want to miss your testimony.
I'm concerned with the entrance and exits of the, where people turn into Apple Patch and leave Apple Patch. I know this is for 72 individuals that don't drive, I'm assuming. But I'm assuming that they do have family members that come and go, staff members that have to be, it's sort of like an assisted living is what I'm gathering this is, I mean, which you all have provided for in the past. And my main concern is the traffic and the speed. If I can just get some more help, the county police have been patrolling over there more frequently, which is very helpful, but it continues. I mean, they're just, it's since, since the pandemic, it seems like all the crazies in the world have just been unleashed. And it, if I live there and I'm still able to mow my grass with the push mower at the top of the bank, which maintains the right of way, and then I get my big mower out and mow it. Once a week, it's very challenging to get it done. And it only takes me, if people are nice, 20 minutes. I'm not in their way. I have cones in front of my driveway, which is not very attractive, but people have, in the past, Jim Silliman, I've talked to him, and I've been at Planning and zoning before, that I've had a number of, like, at least since 2015, if I document it all, at least 25 to 30 runoffs, and they still runoff. And that's why the cones are out there. And when I do mow, I put the cone a little bit closer to the white line, not on it, just to get their attention. But this is scary that I was mowing my push mower back toward Crestwood, and I actually saw a dump truck not even try to move, not get over where that cone was. It's on, you know, right, right at the white line. He knocked it off and put it down in my yard. If that'd been me, I'd be dead. So it's to you all that don't travel that, or maybe you do, I don't know. It's so dangerous. Once a week, I'm mowing. Thank you, God, for letting me mow the grass and keep it nice and pretty. I get a lot of comments on that, my area there. And as long as I can stay there and mow, I'm going to do it. But we need something to alert the, and I've talked with the salesman up at Rogers Group. He's been very kind to me. He's told the truck drivers, it's 35 through there. It's the law. Do it. And some adhere to it, some of them don't, you know. Sometimes I guess the email didn't get all, you know, they just ignore it. And in the past, way back when we first moved there, there was a school bus that was, got hit by a dump truck, and a little boy got killed. And since then, you know, and it's just, I don't know why people have to drive so fast through there. It's a straight stretch. And why they runoff on my driveway, which I explained to Mr. Silliman, that it's unbeknownst to me. I know taxi and driver has a lot to do with it. I had a whole list of where people run off the road. And that, and it's not going to be a turning lane. I'm happy about that because my property is right there. I've got four lots left. And obviously, I'm not developing it because I like to look at it. And, but if I were to move or sell or whatever, it's, that's up to the new landlord. I don't, you know. But that's my concern, and if anybody can help me get that speed limit where, like, I want one of those, and I talked to Thomas Wimsit at the quarry, and he even offered to pay, because the state would put a, you know, where it says, "This is your speed", you know, and maybe that would get them to, you know, slow down on that stretch of road. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. And I just employ your help. That's all I'd like to, you know, tell this group today. It's very dangerous, and I hope I don't get hit, you know, or hurt, or anybody for that matter. I mean, if it was, the people that drive down that road, think of this. Think of your daughters, your sons, your grandma, your aunts and uncles. It's just, and I'm just, I'm widowed. I take care of everything there. David Crask was my husband. He worked for the Oldham County Road Department. And he knows about roads. I do, too, because we lived it together. So just wanted to say my compliments, and if any help that everybody, or suggestions, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Crask. Mr. Silliman, do you have something to add?
Yes, just, and Ms. Crask and I were discussing this earlier before the hearing, but, and she and I have discussed this over the past several years. It's not a new condition, obviously. She expressed that. But as far, there are some maintenance issues. I think we can reach out to the Transportation Cabinet to have them address just little shouldering improvements. She and I were talking, and it looks like, I think, maybe two years ago, they did some shouldering, and it has washed out some. So I'll reach out to the Transportation Cabinet Maintenance Department, see if they can... So I'll reach out to the Transportation Cabinet Maintenance Department, see if they can get that dressed up. I wasn't aware of the coordination about the radar speed signs. I know KYTC typically doesn't erect those radar speed signs. We do some on county roads, but this is a state route. But it's possible, if the quarry's willing to pay for it, that they might permit that in their right-of-way. So I'll also reach out to the cabinet about that.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Silliman. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak opposition or with questions about this application? All right. Seeing none, we'll move into questions from commission. Commissioners, who has questions? Crickets. Okay. Last chance. We'll move into rebuttal from applicant. You good? Okay. Ms. Crask, anything final from your end? All right. Final statement to offer? Ms. Crask, final statement, anything? Nope? All right. Mr. Fisher.
All right. On page three of your staff packet, you've got suggested motions of the development plan to either approve or deny the development plan, as well as you've got the attached proposed binding elements that Anna mentioned in her staff report, and those include the approval applies only to the plan presented at the August 26, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. There shall be no changes to the plan without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission and Engineers Office, and the plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements, and comply with all necessary easement restrictions at the time of construction plan approval.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, Commissioners, floor is open for motions. Ms. Davis.
I'll make a motion that we approve PZ-25-19.
Get closer to that mic, please. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve PZ-25-19. It complies with the objectives of-
Is that my con-
Oldham County Conference Comprehensive Plan, the zoning ordinances, and the subdivision regulations. The approval is contingent upon the strict adherence to the binding elements conditions of approval listed above.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Counsel, do we have an adequate motion on the floor?
We do.
We have a motion on the floor. Mr. Marsh, is that your second? Thank you. We'll move into roll call vote. Ms. Edgar.
I mean, Commissioner, sorry. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And PZ-25-019 has been approved on a vote of 13 to 0. Thank you. We'll do a quick reset, jump into the next. All holding up all right? Okay? All right. Ms. Edgar, you ready to read us the next docket?
Docket PZ-25-020. An application has been filed by Hannah Stone requesting a waiver to allow residential use in a commercial district on properties located at 111 and 113 North First Avenue, LaGrange. The properties are both .152 acres in Zone C2 Commercial District.
Good morning, Commission. Sandy Rigroden, Oldham County Planning, Planner 1. As we are here for PZ-25-020, as Ms. Edgar just read, the property is Zoned C2, and the land use is commercial. It's point, both properties are .52 acres. The site history, in 2003, a minor plat was approved to divide 113 North First Avenue and 111 North First Avenue into two lots, and I'll be showing that to you later. The case history, as it was posted to the website on July 25, adjoining property owners noticed on August 5, and public notice, public notice appeared in Oldham era on 8/7. The applicant is seeking a residential use waiver to allow residential use within an existing single-family-like structures located at 111 and 113 North First Avenue. The properties are currently Zoned C2 Commercial. The applicant owns a property at 111 North First Avenue, and her family owns the other. Madeline Nibbles &amp; Wine is the applicant's restaurant located at 111 North First Avenue. The restaurant location contains an existing apartment that was previously used as a short-term rental. The adjacent structure located at 113 First Avenue will be the applicant's primary residence. Living on-site, according to the applicant, would reduce commute time, enabling her to focus more on her day-to-day business operations. And here is an aerial of the two properties, which are basically across the street from here. And here is the zoning, which is commercial. And here is that original minor plat that was approved, separating the two lots. In the area, you can see, here are the two structures in question. This is where the restaurant is and the apartment, and then this is just, I believe it's vacant, single-family-looking type structure. And in the area, these areas are approximate where the locations are, it's not exact, but as you see, there's other areas in the neighborhood of mixed use, where it's either mixed use on the same building, or mixed use next to each other, or close by Main Street. Here are the permitted uses for the residential, for the C2. And here are the setbacks and other requirements. In summary, the applicant is requesting a residential use waiver to allow residential use in a commercial district on properties located at 111 and 113 North First Avenue, LaGrange. The properties are both .52 acres in Zone C2 Commercial District. Potential conditions of approval, the residential use waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the August 26, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anything else from staff? Clear? Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Sandy? Seeing none? Mr. Finney, you got a, you got, you got a question? All right.
Okay.
Point out, point out the lots that are in question.
The zoning?
Yeah, because mine, mine just has one lot in red.
It's these two right here.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Finney? All right. Mr. Douglas, did you have something? Okay.
This is for staff. Maybe Sandy or Mr. Fisher can answer. I know we've done some of these waivers for residential use in commercial buildings, correct? You're acknowledging yes?
Yes.
Was there any conversations between the applicant regarding asking for a zoning amendment for CN?
I believe there were, and I'll let her or the attorney speak to that.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Douglas? Mr. Fisher, you have something?
Yeah. And to elaborate on the question, I mean, we've had conversations with the city of LaGrange, because we understand that that's the nature of the downtown area, is that, you know, to look at, maybe even having a city enacted zone change to, to make almost all of downtown LaGrange CN, because that does make sense. They've, you know, yet to maybe go that route, but I think their attorney will elaborate maybe on what their future plans are at looking at a zoning change. But yeah, you're right, we have done residential use waivers in industrial parcels, as you go out of LaGrange towards Singleton Lane, that's happened, so.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Douglas? Mr. Klingemfuss, did you have a question?
Yes, so this is an issue of changing commercial development to residential?
All right. So it's not a zoning change, so it's just a use that is being proposed here, correct?
Okay. So how's that going, does it affect the future development of that?
No. So it simply is allowing them to use this commercially-zoned existing structure in a residential fashion, which may even, I don't know if the attorney is going to elaborate on this or not, but may have been some of that use in the, in the past on either of those structures, so.
Ryan, does it have any impact on adjoining properties in terms of setbacks or landscaping requirements and so forth for those properties?
No. It does not.
All right.
Mr. Fisher. In the event that the restaurant or the other business closes down there, does this change allow them to have those as apartments? Could they rent those out residentially, as long as ownership doesn't change? What's the perpetuation of what we're doing?
Well, essentially, the waiver will run with the land, so it would, it would be filed with a certificate of land use in the clerk's office, which would mean that they continue to use it residentially. Now, one thing you could do, and it's not in here as a, as a binding element, but you could put a stipulation on it, that once this property either sells, or the restaurant, that the waiver would cease to exist. We've started doing that recently on conditional use permits with the Board of Adjustments for short-term rentals and home occupations, that when that property sells, the conditional use permit goes away, that it just doesn't run to the next person that goes, "I can operate a hair salon now." So that's potential, you could add a binding element in there, if the applicant's willing to agree to that, that it would cease to exist. You could also put, if their intent is to maybe eventually get a zoning change, you could maybe put a time limit on it as well, and say, well, you know, we could grant you a residential use waiver for a period of a year, knowing that a zoning change is going to have to be asked. That's another thing you all could do. Once again, it's not in here now, it's for you all to figure out and to discuss, and, you know, hear the applicant's testimony first on that as well, but that's another option for you to think about.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Further questions? Last chance. All right. Thanks, Sandy. We'll move into presentation from applicant, Mr. Swansburg.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we've got Mr. Fisher, Mr. Hudson, Ms. Edgar. Good morning, everybody. Mike Swansburg with the law firm, Swansburg &amp; Smith, 117 West Main Street, right here in LaGrange. I actually had with me Ms. Stone this morning, but unfortunately, Ms. Stone had to leave because she had to go open the restaurant that we will be talking about, that has already been discussed. So she was here earlier, did want to speak on that, but unfortunately, is not here. So for better, for worse, ladies and gentlemen, you've got me this morning speaking on behalf, and me alone, in terms of the proposal. So I want to go ahead and bring up, I do want to get to, there are some, I do want to get into some of the issues that we talked about, Commissioner Douglas, that you've raised. Commissioner Marsh, you've also raised here too, as part of our presentation. So hopefully, we'll get to answer those as part of this presentation. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have, or discuss how this might get resolved. But again, I have the honor of representing, it's actually 111 North First Avenue LLC. So Ms. Stone was the one who applied for it as an individual, but as a practical matter, there's actually an LLC that owns it, which is why I'm standing here in front of you, and not Ms. Stone as an individual. And they actually own both 111 and 113 North First Avenue here in LaGrange. And as was already indicated, it's literally across the corner from the Fiscal Court Building that we're in right now. And what we're asking for you all to do is approve a, what I would call a short-term waiver in this instance. This would be a short-term waiver of the comprehensive zoning ordinance to permit mixed use, so it's not going to be exclusively residential use, and it's not exclusively commercial use. We're talking about a mixed-use situation here for those properties located at 111 and 113 North First Avenue, which are, as you've already heard, presently Zoned C2. Again, I always like to talk about what some of the guiding standards are, and what do we talk about waivers, and where do we get the concept of waivers from? We actually borrow it from the subdivision regulations. And subdivision regulations, 1A, A through K, set forth following guidelines, along with others, when considering development throughout Oldham County, to guide future growth and development patterns in the county in accordance with the comprehensive plan, to protect the character and social and economic stability of Oldham County, while encouraging orderly and beneficial development, and to protect and conserve the value of land throughout Oldham County, and the value of the buildings and improvements upon the land, and to minimize the conflicts between the uses of land and buildings. So we like to borrow those as part of this discussion of waivers overall. And the comprehensive plan, let's talk about that comprehensive plan as a guideline for us when we are thinking about this. What I would propose to you all is that this particular application meets or comports with at least three areas of the comprehensive plan, particularly, number one, land use objective LU-1-3 sub 1, which encourages, quote, "development to locate in areas with existing infrastructure and services before moving into less-developed areas of the county." So we want to make sure we utilize areas that are already developed before we start going through open areas of the county that may be farmland, or, or may be developed in a less-dense situation. So we're already talking about using existing structures here, that's one of the, one of the proposals as part of this particular proposal today. Number two, land use objective LU-2-1 sub 1, which encourages, quote, "new mixed-use development, in addition to existing mixed-use centers and planned unit developments." So again, part of the comprehensive plan actually encourages us to think about mixed-use developments as part of a development process. And so we would argue in this case that the proposed mixed use of these two properties is consistent with that objective. And then third, land use objective LU-3-1, which calls us to, quote, "support existing business retention and growth compatible with adjacent land uses and the availability of community facilities and services." Part of a development plan, or part of an idea that comes before you all, in many ways, hopefully is designed to, to support businesses that are already here in Oldham County in some form or fashion. And I'll talk to you about it here in a second, but of course, there is an existing business on one of those properties, that is Madeline's Nibbles &amp; Wine, which is a restaurant, well-regarded restaurant, here in town, that is already operating, and is actually operated by the owners of the property, who are the applicants today. So again, we're talking about supporting those existing businesses here in the county as another means of support for this project. We talk about waivers, what is, how do you get to a waiver at the end of the day? Again, Section 9.1 of those same regulations we just talked about a minute ago, provides that the commission, quote, "may reduce or otherwise grant waivers from the requirements of the regulations." And then such waivers, quote, "may be granted with, only without detriment to the public good, without impairing the purposes, basic objectives, and intent of the regulations, and without impairing the desirable general development of the neighborhood and the community." So when you're talking about waivers, conceptually speaking, you want to make sure that they're not outlandish, and that they are designed in some way to impact or to promote the public good at the end of the day. That's the point of a waiver. It's not to give someone some kind of special treatment that hasn't either been done in the past, or is some kind of crazy-outlandish idea. This is one that says, either this has been something that's done before, or it's done with the intent of promoting the public good on the whole. To accomplish a waiver, and again, this is part of the, if you looked in your packets, and I suspect you all will see, there's a motion there that talks about this in some form or fashion, commission must find one of the following, either an exceptional hardship, which is where the commission would find that strict compliance with the regulations would create an undue hardship because of some type of exceptional, unique topographic or other natural or man-made physical conditions encountered on the particular land, and the commission may weigh the requirements of the regulations to the extent it's necessary to relieve that undue hardship, or design innovation and large-scale development, and regulations may be modified by the commission in the case of plans for complete neighborhoods or other design innovations which, in the commission's opinion, still achieve the basic objectives of the regulations. I would submit to you that Part B is not applicable here, because we're not talking about a large-scale development. We're talking, again, about two parcels of land across the corner here from the courthouse. And then this is where I'd note, and this was a discussion point for you all, I would reiterate this, historically, the commission has extended this standard or borrowed this standard to waivers of the zoning ordinance in this sense. When you're talking about industrial areas that have also had some residential component to it, or a commercial that has had some residential component to it, the commission has historically borrowed this standard in applying or considering that particular request- borrowed this standard in applying or considering that particular request, and I would ask that you do that in this case as well. Let's talk a little bit about the properties, and I didn't actually highlight them here, but it's these two properties that we're talking about right here, 111 and 113 North First Avenue. Both of them, as I've already indicated and has already been said, is designated as C2 properties within the downtown La Grange business corridor. What is a C2 property? Well, it's a community business district, which is designed really to provide for retail shopping and personal service uses, shopping goods and household services for a population considerably larger than that served by local business districts. It makes sense in many ways to have a commercial district in a downtown area where you've got businesses where people can come and they can shop, they can eat, they can engage in commerce in some way, shape, or form. So it does make sense in a general conceptual sense to have a commercial business district in a town like in La Grange. However, what I would submit has already been discussed here is that La Grange in many ways is also unique, given the structures that are within the downtown area and the already prevalent use, and I think a good use personally, of mixed-use concept in those buildings, because you want to have people who can also be present here in La Grange and not simply just visiting on a weekend or visiting on weekday and then going somewhere else. There is value in having both of those concepts here in downtown. Again, speaking for myself in this sense, but also on behalf of the applicant. Uses of a C2 zone, this has already been shown for you. So again, what are some of the uses of a C2 zone? Both permitted and conditional that include, for example, farmers' markets, hotels, movie theaters, business offices, and hospitals, both for humans and for animals, quite frankly. But what is not permitted in a C2 zone is a single-family residence, as it stands. That's why we're asking for a waiver. Let's talk about 111 North First Avenue, and what actually I'm going to do is I'm going to flip that, I'm going to talk about 113 North First Avenue first. This is a picture of 113 North First Avenue. So what we're asking, again, consistent with that precedent I talked about a moment ago, we're asking to grant a short-term waiver of the zoning ordinance to permit the applicant to temporarily use these properties for mixed-use purposes. Again, not exclusively for residential and not exclusively for commercial, but for a mixed-use purpose. In particular, the applicant intends to live here, if this is granted, at 113 North First Avenue. And there's actually a, and I'll show you here in a second, there's actually a, this is a single-family home, that's how it was built, that's how it was originally intended to be. It is still designed and still has the facilities for single-family residents in some way, but they're also going to use the space on the first floor for storage related to the restaurant that's next door to them. So they were going to continue to use this as mixed-use if you all grant the waiver for this, but they intend to actually be in this space immediately upon approval if you all in fact approve that. So here's the inside of 113 North First Avenue. As I mentioned before, it's designed as a single-family home a long time ago, and it continues in many ways to, it was in there just like a normal fireplace, these are bedrooms upstairs. So again, in many ways, it continues to exhibit the same traits of a single-family home, but what the applicant is proposing to do, again, is utilize that upstairs portion as a living space and then utilize the downstairs for purposes of storage related to the business. That's what the mixed-use would be in this instance. So this is 111 North First Avenue. This is the restaurant, Madeline's Nibbles &amp; Wine, as you all might have seen walking by it or driving by it. And to ensure the success, and it was mentioned in the staff report, so the applicant in this case does not live in La Grange, they don't live here in downtown, they have to commute every day to come in. They are required to be on premises between 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM every single day. The amount of investment they have put into this particular business and these buildings precludes them in many ways from maintaining separate residences. So rather than having a residence outside of the area and coming in and going back, and to ensure the success of the business, but again, you know, restaurants have very small margins as it is, they want to make sure that they are trying to save as much money to invest in that business, they're asking, that's why they're asking if they can be able to use this as a short-term fix for that limitation of, as I say, CU or C2 property. So again, they want, they, should they be precluded from using the property for mixed use, it is entirely likely, not to throw this out there, but based on my conversation with them, it's entirely likely that the financial burden of having all these different areas outside of La Grange and within La Grange may be too great for them to continue with. So in many ways, they want to utilize this in the short term to be able to, again, continue with their business, to be able to move forward and fulfill that dream of theirs. Here's the inside of 111 North First Avenue. Now, what I'm showing you actually is the upstairs portion of the building. The downstairs, if you've been in there, is a restaurant. It's fully designed like a restaurant, there's a bar inside and tables just like you would see in a restaurant, but this is the upstairs, which is currently utilized, quite frankly, for their children during the day when they're at work and their kids essentially hang out upstairs and the, while they're essentially working. So that's why you see there's some use of it right now, that's what they use, they actually use it for their kids to make sure that they can all be on premises at the same time while they're operating the restaurant downstairs. So this came up in the questions to staff, but I wanted to address it now. So to be sure, again, the applicant recognizes that the need for a long-term solution here really is to go through the regular zoning map amendment process. And although the, although we haven't filed it as of today, the applicant does intend to file and obtain an amendment to the zoning map to change the property from C2. What we would probably propose to be is CN, which is a mixed-use property here in, that's already utilized in downtown La Grange, as actually evidenced here on the map. Here's our property right here, 113 111. As you can see, CN exists just a couple of houses down. It also exists further down here in downtown La Grange as well. So that would be the long-term fix of this particular property, and that is what they fully intend to do. So again, in consideration of the commission's request, the applicant is agreeable, and I put this even on the screen here, we are agreeable to a binding element that would require the applicant to apply for and obtain such an amendment within the next 12 months. We think that that is a feasible request for us to be able to do, to get it done within the next 12 months, and the applicant would agree to do that. I know there's some discussion about if a waiver is granted, would it run with the land or run with the applicant? In our situation, Commissioner Marsh, I know you asked this in particular, we would be agreeable in this instance to also an element that essentially says it sticks with the applicant. So if they sell the property at that point, as far as we're concerned, it doesn't necessarily need to run with because who knows what happens with the land after that. So I would submit that the applicant would be agreeable to a binding element that would limit it to them so long as they continue to use it in the manner that they are proposing. And that is, so again, I don't know if that addresses your concern, sir, but just want to make sure I put that out as part of my presentation, that there, we have those considerations and we are agreeable to those changes as part of your consideration of this request. So in summary, the applicant, again, respectfully requests that the planning commission, consistent with its own precedent that we decided or we discussed, to grant a short-term waiver of the limitations of the zoning ordinance to permit the, again, mixed-use, we're talking about both commercial and residential, of the properties located at 111 and 113 North First Avenue, on the basis that strict compliance with these limitations in this instance would create an undue hardship upon a small business that may not survive without the commission agreeing to temporarily ease this burden. And again, I don't mean to throw it in that context, but again, talking with the applicant, I think that is a reality for them at this point. So that would be a request. In addition, and in its support, the applicant maintains that this request will adhere to the guidelines set forth in the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan, namely, A, or one, by encouraging mixed-use development in an already developed area of the county, two, by protecting the character of downtown La Grange while encouraging new development. Again, we believe it would be consistent with that vibe that, for lack better term, that already exists in downtown La Grange, and also, three, by supporting an existing business and promoting growth that is compatible with adjacent land uses. Again, we want to promote a business that is starting here, that wants to continue here and is otherwise doing well and would continue to do well if given this request. So again, I appreciate your time, I appreciate your thoughtful consideration, the questions already being raised this morning and the opportunity to address those. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else further, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swansburg. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or have questions about the application? All right, commissioners, you're up. Questions for the applicant? Certainly, please.
Are either of these properties registered as historic?
I'm sorry, say it again, sir. Are they registered as historic? To the best of my knowledge, they are not registered as historic. I don't think they've gone through the registry process. I mean, theoretically, I guess they would be eligible, but that would be up to the applicant to decide whether to apply through that process with the park service and the state.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Allison.
Yes, sir.
Point of clarification, in the note that we're providing.
Is that mic on, Mr. Allison? Get that mic on and let's get you close to it.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Much better.
And notes provided, it indicated that the applicant owned the property at 111 and her parents owned the property at 113, but in your presentation, it says both properties were owned by an LLC. Can you clarify that?
So the, so 111, 111 North First Avenue LLC is the owner of at least 111. So they jointly own with their dad the property at 113. So he's kind of a passive investor, for lack better term, in the property, but Ms. Stone and her husband are the active owners of both of those properties. So there may be a technical, technical in terms of, I think, her father maybe, again, is a part owner on that front, but Ms. Stone and her husband are owners of the properties.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Allison, anything additional? Okay. All right. Mr. Finn, did you have a question?
Mr. King.
And Mr. Marsh, please.
Counsel.
Sir.
You refer to this as a short-term waiver many times. Are you imposing, are you asking for a period? You mentioned maybe possibly one year. Is that a binding element you are actually suggesting? I don't see it written on our packet.
So I say short-term, that's the way I presented it as part of the discussion for us. We did talk about, and I've already talked to the applicant about this, they are agreeable to making a binding element in this case where it talks about, within the next year, they will, they will move and hopefully obtain a zoning change of the, of the properties to what we hope or expect it to be, if approved, would be CN. So when I say short-term, what I'm saying is, the idea is this isn't going to be a request in this instance where it would be one in perpetuity, just for the sake of asking per se because of either some precedent or otherwise. This is, for lack of a term, a unique circumstance which we say, hey, we understand the unorthodox or uniqueness of it, and that's what, you know, for the, to the extent it makes people feel more comfortable, we're willing to limit the scope of that to ensure that the process at the end of the road is also fine.
So you're willing to consider it, but you're not defining it at this time?
I'm sorry, say.
You're not defining it at this time as 12 months or anything? You're just saying those conditions. Mr. Fisher, I'm going to redirect here, how would we put that in as a binding element? Do you have a?
Well, when he was talking about that, I mean, I simply wrote down applicant shall apply for a permanent zoning change within 12 months. The problem with that is, do we write that to where, if not, the waiver expires, but then how do we enforce that? I mean, we're not going to walk across the street and evict the homeowner and be like, sorry, it's 12 months and one day, you guys got to get out. So that's difficult for us to be able to enforce. So I, I don't know. The other one I wrote down with the waiver would be limited to the current ownership of the property used in conjunction with the purposes of the plan reviewed at the August 26, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing, which I believe Mr. Swansburg alluded to, but I don't, I don't know how to word number two there. I don't, I don't word things real well on the spot like Mr. Urban used to do, but I have to have time to think.
Counsel, you got a suggestion in this connection?
Well, I think a time period would, would be acceptable. A limitation to the applicant only would be acceptable. The whole thing could be conditioned on an application within the next 12 months to change the zoning, and any combination of those three things, I think, would be acceptable if it's articulated properly in a motion.
Mr. Marsh, I think one of the things that's hanging up there is that nobody here can guarantee an approval, but there can be an assurance that there's at least an application brought. The consequences of that, I think, speak for themselves, right? If it should happen to fail or not occur, then we hit a timeline.
Sure. And again, I mean, I, other than just taking my word for it, which of course I obviously would do here, and Mr. Fisher, I've got no problem with the articulated binding element of it being limited to the, to the owners in the current situation, so I think that's perfectly fine as it is. Again, I would be agreeable to, you know, my hope and expectation is that we could apply and actually obtain the change within a year, but we certainly would apply well within a year. In fact, my hope is that we would actually do it immediately or as soon as thereafter as if the commission were to give this approval. So my understanding from the applicant too is they've already spoken to the mayor of La Grange, and the mayor is, is excited about the project. I can't speak for the mayor, of course, so don't hold me to the mayor's statement on that front, but my, my hope, of course, given the, my understanding, of course, of changes in zoning and the laws that are applicable to that, that this would be a good candidate for that purpose, and I don't know that, absent any extenuating circumstance, it would require us to take too terribly long for this to happen, other than the usual per-month requirements in terms of meeting schedules. But, so again, I would be agreeable to a, I would be agreeable to one that where it says we have to apply within a year. I fully expect that it would be probably as soon as next month or the month after that we would actually apply and go through that process, because they want to get this done with officially much sooner than later, so they don't have to worry about it anymore.
And Mr. Fisher, my idea here is that any action that we would take, that this doesn't turn into rental properties somewhere down the future, that, you know, that it stays in the commercial district as it is, and it does have that service to the community, as you mentioned. So that's what I'm trying to incorporate into that binding element, is your take of that. Thank you.
All right, other questions? Ms. Davis, please. Closer to the mic, please.
I'm confused as a commissioner. Aren't many of those properties in La Grange already used for residential purpose on the second floor and commercial on the first? What kind of zoning do they have?
Do you have that zoning? I believe almost all of them are some type of commercial zoning that have been used that way for years.
Yes, I'm aware of that. That's why I'm asking the question.
I can't speak to that on the record, though, because I've never truly been inside any of them.
Speculating, there could be those that are as a non-conforming use, so they're used predated zoning.
We can do that.
Grandfathered, in other words. There could be a lot of those, and we're speculating entirely as we discuss some of those. Some of those could be CN-zoned as well, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that one works.
So some of those that are currently zoned as CN represent those that have that approved type of use?
That's correct. Many of those properties down in La Grange use the second floors for residential uses and the first level, and it's all commercial, but they use it that way.
Right.
That's why I was confused, why were, anybody needs a waiver, I guess?
Right.
For that type of use. It looks like it would just be for everybody.
Well, you know, the non-conforming use that is allowed under those circumstances is something that's, shall we say, a tad nuanced.
I was just confused.
Ms. Nassar?
So I'll come back to the applicant as to the question of why propose a waiver, bring a waiver versus try to change zoning.
The reality of it is it's a stopgap measure because of the immediacy or the exigency need on the part of the applicant. So they know that there's a long-term requirement that they want to fulfill. They want to do this the right way. That's really the goal here, is to make sure that they're following all the rules. And so, but the, the request for the short, I say short-term because it's, for them, it's a stopgap measure, so that they can, if this is allowed, they can move in immediately and be able to do this immediately while they are also working on the long-term fix. So again, the zoning process can take some estimates up to a year, sometimes it's less than that. I would probably argue it's less than that, but it is a multiple-month issue, and for them, that's real time and real money. So they're, they're hoping to get this done immediately and then be able to move for that long-term plan. I don't know if Commissioner Nassar, that answers your question, but that's the goal here. I don't know if Ms. Davis, that answers your question either.
Keep going.
One more question for staff. Is this a recommendation to the city of La Grange?
No, this is simply a waiver to allow the residential use in the, in the commercial. If they come back for a zoning change, that would be a recommendation for.
Okay, further questions, commissioners? Seeing none? Mr. Allison, please.
Could we possibly, could we possibly word the binding element such that it be approved as a conditional use pending the application of the, for the CM within a certain period? And then if that CM is not granted, that would then wipe out the conditional use as well?
Well, it's not a conditional use, it's a waiver. There is a.
There is a, there is a difference, but what you've proposed, I think, would be, would be an adequate part of a motion.
All right? You guys good? Mr. Fisher?
I don't disagree with Commissioner Allen, Allison, but the problem with that is, is if you've given approval for this applicant to, to live in the house, and then ultimately, I think the way he worded that was the, the zoning change doesn't go through, we go over there and knock on the door and be like, you guys have to get out? Like, that's, it makes it diff, I mean, the waiver would become null and void at that point to allow them to be able to use it residentially, so now, we're tasked with going over and, I just think that gets difficult. The way we've got it worded right now is the applicant shall apply for a permanent zoning change within 12 months, which means they have to at least do the application, they have to go through the, the due process to get the zoning change. If it gets denied, they've still got a waiver to be able to allow them to use that residentially despite the zoning change. I wouldn't see why, and I can't predict the future, and I don't speak for the council, but why that zoning change wouldn't go through to make that CN? But I think that we have to have something in there that requires that they go through that permanent zone change process.
Which is the reason that you take the additional steps to tie it to applicant instead of a buyer.
Yes, and again, we're agreeable to the idea that the waiver runs with the applicant, not with the land in this instance, and I'd be agreeable to that type of binding element as part of this too. So, again, it would, the onus would be on the applicant, which they fully own and will want to do, in this case, to go forward with that zone change requirement, and, again, to the extent, in the interim, something happens with the business, they decide to move, whatever that would be, at the end of the day, then I would agree with you based upon what we said, that that waiver ceases to exist. The next owner, or the owners, if they had a different idea, would have to come back and do a new proposal. That would, that would be something we would agree to, which I think is essentially what, Mr. Fisher, you've articulated at this point.
Okay, you guys good? All right? Sure.
I kinda have a little issue with this, and then the reason why is because I understand the applicant is agreeing to put in that 12-month, and my concerns is that, just like Mr. Fisher said, if LaGrange, for some reason, goes the opposite direction. One of the waiver requirements that you're making is that to create an undue hardship for your applicant is a financial burden, traveling back and forth, renovation. It just seems like if we put that financial burden on her to, or them, to make renovations financially, blah, 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 and for some reason, the city of LaGrange decides to take a different route.
So, Commissioner Douglas, my, my proposal, in terms of what we would agree to, obviously would be that we would make the effort to go forward with that. I would ask that the waiver exist for the applicant as it stands, and based upon the existing hardships and what likely would be a continuing hardship that would be addressed by virtue of a waiver and allowing them to move forward with that. So, I, I think that that would continue to exist. I would be agreeable to, you know, the idea here is that we would essentially apply for it. We can't predict whether LaGrange would, and I don't know that I would agree to a binding element that says they have to get approval of it per se, because again, I would be agreeable to the waiver existing with the applicant alone for that period of time. So, let's say the hypothetical sense that LaGrange denies it in some way, shape, or form, as was already indicated, it would stay with the applicant, but to the extent that they stop using it for that purpose, that waiver ceases to exist. So, again, it's only addressing the exigency or issues related to the applicant's situation and not to something that, you know, has nothing to do with what we're asking for here today. So, so again, that's why I would be agreeable, again, to a binding element that talks about applying within a window of time, and again, I full expect that the application would be done well before a year. I don't know that I would agree to a binding element that says that it has to be approved per se within that year, because again, I can't control what LaGrange does, and then we put our, to your point, we put a situation where the county now has to decide, how do they enforce it if the city doesn't approve it in some way, and does the applicant have to come back, as opposed to just approving the waiver as it stands based upon the exigency and evidence in front of you today, allowing them to move forward with that? But if they change it, if the applicant changes it, they don't get the benefit of the waiver anymore, and they also have to apply for that change within a timeframe. So, again, those are the, we can control what we can do, obviously. We can control applying, we can control whether or not we run the business and continue to maintain it as we're asking you all, but outside of that, and we would agree to binding elements that essentially say that. So, I don't know if that answered your question, but I would be agreeable to the request, again, to limit it to the applicant and also require them to file within a period of time to seek that request, but I don't know if I can go further enough to say we would agree to it being approved, because again, I can't control that, and that's a, that's a, that's a pretty dangerous situation for an applicant to make a contingent upon, because, I mean, there could be any number of reasons why the city might not, at the end of the day. I don't know if that helps you with my-
Mr. Hampton?
I think this is one of those things where we're making it way more complicated than it has to be, but that's just, I'm simple-minded. I agree that the, the binding element or the variance should travel with the owner, but other than that, we're not in the fortune-telling business, and so why can't we just move forward on this?
I think it's fair, right? I mean, you take a peek behind the curtain, you have somebody who has a great deal at risk, and what's at risk is a business and the property that goes along with it, and, you know, from that perspective, I'll speculate when I say they're motivated to make these things fall in line, and I believe they're gonna take those actions based on what I'm hearing. You know, if you give an approval today, your concern is, that's fine, but I wanted to run with someone who's operating this business here. You tie it to the applicant, you've achieved that, that goal. The highest level of assurance that you can get that LaGrange is going to be agreeable to a zoning change has to do with their hearing process, right? And what's gonna happen? It's gonna come through here, we're gonna make a recommendation, and we're gonna make a judgment based on what we've seen in the meantime, and their actions in between now and then are gonna go a long way to determine what that outcome looks like. Doesn't take much of a crystal ball to understand what their actions are going to be in the meantime, and I, to Mr. Hampton's point, I think that's probably where it rests. Okay, further questions? All right, Mr. Swansburg, back to you. Time for rebuttal, final?
No need for rebuttal, per se. We've already had a really good discussion about the concerns questions from the commission members, and I appreciate all of that. Again, I, I, this isn't, you know, the usual request necessarily that we, we see a lot of times from folks coming up here, but as I would just indicate, for purposed of discussion, we are asking you all respectfully to grant a, the waiver, again, I call it short-term, but a waiver it is nonetheless, of the limitations of the zoning ordinance to permit, again, the mixed use of both commercial and residential of the properties located at 111 and 113 North First Avenue in LaGrange, on the basis, again, that strict compliance in these instances would create an undue hardship upon a small business that would otherwise have some difficulty continuing to thrive here in LaGrange, and on top of that, again, the, it does adhere, we believe, to the, the guidelines or the, the motivation put forth by the comprehensive plan, by encouraging mixed use in a development that's already here in the county, protecting the character of LaGrange, and also supporting that existing business that is compatible with adjacent land uses. And so, again, appreciate all of your time, your consideration, and your questions, and I think, Mr. Chairman, with that, that's all I've got to say, either for rebuttal or for closing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swansburg. Mr. Fisher?
All right, on page two of your staff packet, you do have suggested motions to either approve or deny the waiver. You do have language in there that Mr. Swansburg has addressed in his presentation about the undue hardship. Just keep in mind those blank spaces in there for you to actually use things that you've heard today, based on the evidence and testimony you've heard at today's hearing, is part of your, your motion. With that, we have conditions of approval on the third page. The one that's written there is the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the August 26, 2025 Planning Commission Public Hearing, and then I believe we have come to the agreement that number two will be the applicant shall apply for a permanent zoning change within 12 months, and then the third one, the waiver will be limited to current ownership of the property used in conjunction with the purposes of the plan reviewed at the August 26, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Mr. Swansburg, is that consistent with your-
For purposed to record, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, questions? Discussion? Floor is open. Ms. Kraus?
Regarding docket PZ-25020, I make a motion that we approve a residential waiver for mixed use for property 113 North First Avenue, based on usage innovations of the Cates, which are existing property and buildings, and that will achieve the basic objectives and regulations. It encourages business retention by relieving financial and honestly, human hardship. And then I'd like to propose the following conditions. The waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the August 26, 2025 Planning Commission Public Hearing, and I'd like to add a binding element that if the property at 113 North First Avenue is sold or no longer used as an owner-occupied residence, the applicant, period, and then the applicant will apply for a change in zoning within the next 12 months. Is that a correct motion?
So, let's go back to, Mr. Fisher, will you read your binding elements once more, please?
So, our, the first one is the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the August 26, 2025 Planning Commission Public Hearing. Applicant shall apply for a permanent zoning change within 12 months, and the third one is the waiver will be limited to current ownership of the property used in conjunction with the purposes of the plan reviewed at the August 26, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Thank you. So, Ms. Kraus, did you want to incorporate that as your binding element language?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor? Is this a-
Well, I want to point out one thing. The application relates to 111 North First and 113 North First, and I believe the motion only referenced one of those two addresses.
All right, so do we want to incorporate both addresses, 111 and 113, in your motion?
It's my understanding that 111 is used for the restaurant, and the only change that we're trying to do is allow a person to live in 111, is that correct?
So, the request is actually for, for both. So, right now, 111 is where the restaurant is located, there is a residential space above it as well. The family has decided that they would, if approved, live in 113 next door, because that's the better space for them, but the request is actually for both of them to be mixed use as well. So, I understand, so that may be the confusion, that may be my fault, but that, but both of them are designed theoretically for mixed-use purposes, that's what our request would be.
So, both is the intent of the application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, yes, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, all right, so both of those are, Mr. Fisher, what do you have?
Well, I was just gonna say, the option would be, is that we do two separate motions and do two different waivers on each address, just in case the other one fails, or-
Or change my binding element that if-
We can incorporate both into the same one.
Yeah, or change my binding element that if the properties, if either property is sold, right? In other words, they may want to continue the restaurant and live somewhere else eventually, once it's established and doing very well, they may not want to live next door anymore, and if they decided to sell the 113 building, then they could still continue the restaurant and sell the 113, and the 113 has to go back and get whatever zoning that they need to use it how they want to. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Can I do that, based on what they're asking?
It's your motion, I want to be careful not to take your motion away from you, okay? So, it's yours to make.
Okay, I stand with what I had.
Okay, counsel-
If either of the properties.
Well, I hate to complicate something that's already complicated, but there, there is a requirement that the commission make a finding that strict compliance would create an undue hardship, and I believe, from the discussion that I've heard among the commissioners and the applicant, I believe there's implicitly already been made a finding that strict compliance would create an undue hardship because these buildings are mixed-use buildings within a mixed-use area, so I would recommend that that language be also incorporated into the motion.
All right, Ms. Kraus, are you willing to accept that reference into your motion as well?
Yes.
Okay. Good otherwise?
If somebody has written all that down, I believe we're good.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Davis has, has a second. Discussion. Moving to a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Mr. Miller? Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton? Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and PZ-25020 has been approved on a vote of 13 to 0. There we go. All right, commissioners, you holding up all right? Need a short break? Keep rolling. We, break? All right, we need, let's, how much you need? Five minutes, 10 minutes? 10? All right, we're gonna take a quick break here before we reset the next. Nah.
All right, so I am so confused. So, are these conditions, what are these conditions? Vipersess conditions, but they keep calling them binding. Do we go with what she said for the binding element, or do we go with what Ryan says for binding? Because she said both.
She restated.